The first regular meeting of the city council for the month of June, the month where summer begins. We'll do our standard, I'm calling the meeting to order, we'll do our standard ritual, pledge of allegiance with, followed by the community invocation. Please stand and join me in honoring our nation's symbol. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in prayer. Our gracious God and Father of the Lord Jesus Christ, we come before you this evening requesting your presence and your help here with this meeting. As the leaders of our city and her citizens gather today to discuss the business of the city, we ask that you cause an aroma of humility and transparency to saturate every conversation. Please grant wisdom, courage, and discernment to our mayor and city council as they consider the agenda before them today, and let every decision they make here this evening be for the good of our city and her people. Lord, we are grateful to live in a friendly and safe community, and we are thankful for the diligent fire and police departments that helped keep us this way. As we witness the mayhem and lawlessness taking place in Los Angeles in these days, we thank you for protecting our community from a similar outbreak of violence and disorder. Lord, as we're on the eve of the annual cherry festival, we ask for your blessing over our community for the next week. Please keep everyone safe as they enjoy the festival, and may it be a fun and memorable event for all who come to visit, but also a good opportunity to showcase Emmett to the wider community. These things we ask in the incomparable name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, Senator. All right, council, we are down tonight, but we do have a court, and that's a good thing. I suppose we could call this a good faith amendment when you delete, you are technically amending, but it's okay to take away, it's adding. So 10B, if you have your program, will not be starting tonight. 10B is on the aisle. Maybe next time.
Yeah, I'd say the 14-day aisle.
14-day aisle. Are there any declarations of conflict of interest that need to be stated for the record? Hearing none. Any declarations of council members discussing outside tonight's meeting, or any meeting that we might be having in the near future, something that we will be voting on? Seeing none. Going to, any announcements for the good of the order by the council members? Going to item eight, the consent agenda is set out, approved within minutes for 13 and 27 May, accounts payable, and President Henderson helped out in the absence of Counselor Denham, who apparently, is that a federal trial, do you know? Is it a federal trial?
I think so.
Yeah.
It would have to be, otherwise she'd be in Enham.
Well, yes.
I'm just guessing.
I guess she's in Boise. All right. So apparently she has been chosen for a federal trial. Kind of told her what to say, but apparently she wanted to be a juror. Because see, when you're worried all day about not being where you're supposed to be as a councilperson, and you had trouble paying attention, I asked her, would that be true? She said, no. I said, well, don't say that. So apparently it wasn't true. There are no permits, so in any event, the consent agenda, Chair will entertain a motion.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
All right.
Seconded.
It's been seconded by Counselor, excuse me, President Henderson. The main motion was made by Counselor Ruzinkin to accept the consent agenda as presented. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Any abstentions? All ayes. Motion passes unanimously. All right. Number nine, discussion, presentation. Eric Thompson, Jim Kelly prosecutor, come on down.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselors, my name is Eric Thompson. I am your prosecuting attorney, and if we haven't met, and some of us have, if we haven't, it is, it's great to meet you, and to be your city prosecutor as well for the past nine years now. My office is staffed with two other full-time attorneys. We have one full-time victim witness coordinator and four additional support staff. As part of our contract together as your city attorney, all my staff work on all of your cases, though I do have one deputy and one of my support staff that primarily do civil work for the county. They chip in in a pinch. We also provide Idaho constitutionally required victim witness services. We provide you legal training for your law enforcement officers. We participate in the multidisciplinary crisis team with them, as well as the adult mental health team. We provide 24/7 on-call prosecutor access for officer questions and to obtain search warrants. All your officers have my cell phone number, and they use it. If you don't believe me, you can go and ask my wife. In fact, I did just upgrade to a satellite service with Verizon, so I can continue to be available this weekend when I go camping with my family. I expect to get a couple text messages and maybe have to drive down to Loman. In the past 15 years, both the city and the county have grown. In 2023, we handled 504 cases for the city of Emmett. My office has added staff in that timeframe, and we anticipate increased growth. Our magistrate court is now one of the busiest in the state. Judge Smith says the judicial council expects to appoint a second magistrate here to Jim County soon. Our commissioners are preparing for that eventuality with some expanded courtroom access. By comparison, both Elmore and Payette are already at two. The reason I'm here, the last time our contract was updated was in 2010. That was at the compensation rate of $43,325 a year. Ron Bjorkman actually helped you draft that contract, if you want to tell you how old it is, and he did a really good job for you because he did not put any cost of living increases into it. So you guys have been effectively getting a discount for the past 14 years. To compare our current contract with other cities, current contracts I could find in Sandpoint, a bit of an outlier, they're at $88,000 a year, and they've got a 3% cost of living increase baked in. Closer to home here, I was able to get Weezer's contract, city of Weezer's at $61,800, and they have a 3% cost of living increase baked in as well. Had there been a cost of living increase put into this contract with the city of Emmett, it'd be at $67,500 today. I count that as a deficit of over $20,000 a year for market rate. I would propose to you that we update this contract, get us closer to market value. My particular proposal, and this is certainly up for negotiation, is for a $5,000 increase annually for the next six years. So fiscal year '26, from 43 to 48, then to 53, to 58, to 63, to 68, to 73, space it out. If we did that by fiscal year 2031, it'd be at $73,326. And if we were to apply the math and do a 3% from that original 2010 number, we'd still be $7,000 below that. We'd be right out of Weezer. I think we're bigger than Weezer. We are bigger than Weezer. We'd be right at the same number as Weezer's. And I'm happy to do the work at about what Weezer does. We're already here, we're doing the work, and give you a little bit of a hometown discount that way. I would also ask then, from then going forward, we do a built into the contract, a cost of living adjustment with it, so that we don't have to come back and ask for big shocking changes to your budgets. I would ask, I think the most fair way to do that is to tie it into the base tax rate increase of the city. You're limited to 3% a year. Sometimes you don't take the 3%. If you take a 2% or a 1%, I would ask that the contract just match whatever the city take, up or down. Sometimes you do go down years, and we'd be happy to take that hit with you. I'm not here today to ask for back pay. I'm not asking you to jump up all at once to try to get to a market value. I understand government budgets, and that would be a shock. I am proposing a solid increase over the next six years to get you there. Ultimately, it'd still give you five more years at a pretty good discount, and then still a good discount going forward. I hope that's something you propose. I didn't ask for an action item tonight, but if that's something that you as a council want to discuss as you go through your budget discussions over the next few weeks, I certainly could draft one up and send it over. If you want to negotiate further, we're certainly willing to do that. I'm just asking for some fair compensation here between the city and the county for our services. Thank you very much. Do you have any questions?
Mayor?
Yes.
Now, that's just with us. What is your bill towards the county?
I'm on salary with the county, so there's no billing for the county.
Mayor?
Yes.
Just out of curiosity, how much do you, how much revenue do you bring in for the city with those 500-plus cases? Do you have any idea?
How much do I bring in? It's the contract amount, the 43,325.
No, I mean, as far as fines or whatever that are levied, do you have any idea?
I don't know.
I was just curious.
It's about $20,000 on the average.
Most of the court costs and stuff, that gets split up. Once it goes out through the court system, it goes into different funds for the state, for the magistrates, and then the city gets about $20,000 back.
Okay. I was just curious. I've never heard.
Any other questions?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too. Take your jacket off, it's too hot out there.
One time out the door.
And tie.
Mr. Cammell, it says approved in the construction exchange of conduit between Emmett and Fatbeam?
And Fatbeam, yes, Mayor. Fatbeam, as you have probably recognized the name, is an internet service provider we've worked with for several years now on various projects and adventures. So tonight, in front of you, you have an agreement. We templated this agreement after a different agreement that we have done with Fatbeam in the past, and to summarize the letter that I put in with the motion that I'm requesting, it essentially will construct our fiber optics from where it leaves off at the corner of Johns and Park Street. You know, we come down Park Street, we turn onto Johns and head and connect to City Hall. This will take the fiber from that location all the way down to the east side of the hospital. That would be our locus water booster facility. It's the last major facility to connect to the fiber optics. So this ends up working out to be a very good deal for us. In summary, we provide the materials, being the conduit and the boxes, and we provide our own cable, but not Fatbeams, and they do all 100% of the construction, the traffic control costs, the engineering, all of that. They have the ability to do directional boring, so it's not disruptive to tearing up the streets and so forth. So they're burdening that entire cost, and in exchange, we put in multiple conduits when we do these projects. In exchange, they will retain ownership of one of those conduits. So it allows us to get our fiber optic cable, they will also blow our cable as well. That's all part of that agreement as well. So it works out very good for us from a cost perspective, for what we would have to pay if we were to bring in a directional boring outfit. It averages about $21 per foot to do that. So they have those, that equipment and personnel and staff to do that. So it works out to be a good partnership for it. Any questions on?
Mayor?
Yeah.
I think we talked about it one time, about have you coordinated as far as with the hospital, and is there's not going to be downtime?
Yeah.
Under their facility?
Yeah, we did two onsite meetings before they did the engineering work and the traffic control, and that was one of the topics that we discussed, and the traffic control plan is very sensitive to the nature of the area with the hospital. We definitely touched on that.
I figured you had, I was going to ask.
No, absolutely. And Jake has reviewed this contract with us and made appropriate changes before it got to you, so the motion is in your letter that we're looking for.
All right, any questions for? Mr. Cammell, I'm sorry. None. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mayor?
Yes?
I'd make a motion, we approve the attached agreement for construction and exchange of conduit with Fatbeam LLC with the mayor to sign.
All right. Main motion has been made by President Henderson to approve the attached agreement, the construction and exchange for conduit agreement with the Fatbeam LLC with the mayor to sign, and the second was made by Counsel Ruzinkin. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. President Henderson?
Yay.
Yay. Counsel Butler?
Yay.
Yay. Counselor Denham is absent and excused. Counselor Harris?
Yay.
Yay. Counselor Nebiker is absent and excused. Counselor Ruzinkin?
Yay.
Yay. Four yays, no nays. Courtroom votes, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
G. Kunkka? Approved plan to Axon Enterprises, Inc. in the amount of $46,308.67.
And Axon is who provides our body cam usage for us. They also provide our tasers, and they also, we purchased our interview room from them. And all of those things that I'm telling you is what's included into this value. We had not been receiving, if you remember, the contract that we had with them, it was very clean, clear-cut. I believe the first contract we signed was around $12,000 approximately, and then the second one was 14, and the third one, which is currently at $16,317. We have never, we have, I shouldn't use the word never, the majority of the time, we've not received the yearly fee where it's just that straight fee. It's been different, as you see, invoices that totaled that amount. And because we had been receiving those inconsistent billings/invoices, we asked for an audit, we being Eileen and myself. That audit even brought us different invoices. And with those different invoices, there was changes with their staff. So there was times where we would call who we were supposed to be reporting to, and then they said there was a different person, so we would contact them, and they would tell us we only owed this amount. But then we'd say, well, this guy told us we owed this amount, and then all of a sudden they would relocate those invoices. So there's been some difficulty with us receiving things from them, and that's why we want to, now we have received those invoices, we have come up with the total that we are comfortable with knowing that we owe, and we'd like to pay that off at this point, and then get back on track. And back on track means that at the end of this year, before October, we will be owing the yearly fee of, rate of $16,317.83. Do you guys have any questions about that?
Mayor, a question, do you feel comfortable still using their service?
I do, I do, yes. And I think that the person that's with them now has sent those clean-cut invoices, and I think we're going to be able to catch up, and then we'll be getting that yearly fee with them. Yes. Yes.
Was there an explanation why they were so sketchy?
I don't know about an explanation necessarily. One guy just said that they had made errors in their invoicing with us, and that they apologized for that, but this is what it is now at this point.
Any other questions? Discussion? Chair will entertain a motion.
Mayor?
Yes?
I'd make a motion, we approve payment to Axon Enterprises, Inc. in the amount of
Thank you. I'll second it. Thank you. Main motion has been made by President Henderson to approve the payment to Axon Enterprises, Inc. in the amount of $46,308.67. The second was made by Counsel Ruzinkin. Any further debate? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Any abstentions? Abstentions, no nays, four yays, motion passes. All right. Building is in Middleton?
I'm sorry, what?
Building is in Middleton? Was it Middleton or Middleton?
I don't know, he said he was going to be out in the hot sun, is all I remember.
Starting with an M.
One of those M-cities.
Maybe it's Moscow, he may be in Moscow, who knows? Okay. Or Marcy. Madam Clerk, you're up.
Okay, cherry festival is next door. Did anybody notice?
I heard.
So you have my report. Next meeting, we will start with our workshop budgets, so. And what we'll do is we'll have our regular council meeting, and then it'll be the end of our meeting. So you don't have to come early that way.
Cool.
Okay, and we'll start with the revenues like we always do, so.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
G.
Mayor, counsel, we're ready for cherry festival, so do you have any questions for me?
Oh, good for you.
Mayor?
Yes?
Truck's all cleaned and washed?
Nope, not yet, but the building is. So we'll be mowing tomorrow, and then we'll be washing engines tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, one more question.
Sure.
Do you need any wax for the old fire truck?
I don't think so. We've got quite a bit through.
They always make that thing look pristine, so.
We try, so.
Thank you very much for that.
No problem. Thank you.
Evening, Mayor and counsel. I will have my report at our next meeting. Just wanted to, again, invite you to our Great Cherry Bake Sale fundraiser Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. The pies tend to go very fast. If you want a fresh baked cherry pie, we'll see you at 11:00 Thursday morning. Also wanted to let you know, we have over 300 kids registered for our summer reading program. So far, we expect to see more come in and register, and so, you know, that is our big why. That's why we do fundraisers like the Great Cherry Bake Sale.
You want that to be your news nugget?
Pardon me?
You want that to be your news nugget?
Yes.
Done.
Okay, thank you. And of course, we welcome anyone that needs a cooling station. So the library's good for that, too. Apologize for not getting that into you today. We only had 107 people through the library between 11:00 and noon today, so kind of all hands on deck. So, any questions for me? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, you have my report, I believe in front of you in the hard copy. As some of you may have heard, there are, I don't want to use the word rumor, because I think when we use the word rumor, we think it's a lie. I don't think in this situation it's necessarily a lie.
We have intel.
We have intel. For us to believe that there's possibly going to be protest groups here during cherry festival, they are anti-Trump, and it's on Saturday. Now, what we don't know exactly is what that's going to look like. We have so far talked to an agency nearby that this group is supposed to be also going there, it's Haley, Idaho, who's supposed to be tending there and going there the same day. They say that this group has been there before, and this group was very peaceful. It was not during a large event like we had, but they did gather on one side of the town, and they marched to the other side of the town, and there was no arrests made, nothing that was violent during that time period. This time, they do say that they will be here Saturday at 6:00, but we don't know what they're, if they're tending, planning on being in potentially the parade, because the march is normally what they do, or if it's something that will they be doing at the city park. We have not just talked to Haley, we also have talked to the Idaho Criminal Intelligence Center, that we knew always the Fusion Center, and this is what they had to say to what we gave them. They said, "Good afternoon, thank you for sending us all this information. We are aware of the various events hosted by this group occurring throughout the state. At this time, we have no indication of any criminal or violent behavior planned for this event. If you hear anything to indicate differently within your area, then please let us know." So we'll continue to work with the chamber, the sheriff's department, EMS, both fire departments, all of them are on board with us. Everything that I get, I will continue to send to them. Jeff Ulmer, if I didn't say that, the emergency manager, he's also assisting us and working on this. We have decided to open up the annex building on Saturday, where we'll have multiple cameras of the park and the city to be able to view, so we will be prepared to be able to recognize any issues that are going on and move on from there.
If they get froggy, what's the plan?
Well, if they get froggy, we do have both agencies. The sheriff's department will have everybody on board, and so will the Emmett Police Department. Everyone works from both agencies on Saturday night, so what a better day to be here, because we are available. We also have ISP will be available and aware of what's going on, and we'll keep them, like the Fusion Center said, to update them if we have any expectations of anything else going on.
Mayor?
Yes?
So, I mean, they can't just take part in the parade, can they? They have to be assigned early, or can they just show up and sign in?
I'll tell you what my recommendation is. You don't resist them.
Yeah.
Okay? So if they show up late, they don't have time to do the paperwork, my recommendation, whoever's running the parade, would say, "Okay, this is the way it's going to work. When the last float or the last entry for the parade starts off, wait a couple minutes, and then if you want to march after that, that's up to you. But you will not be an official participant in the parade, but you can march. And the reason you're not an official participant is you haven't filled out the paperwork to waive liability."
And we've talked to the chamber, and actually, Mr. Butler is in charge of the parade, and that is where we've landed. We feel like the disruption would occur when we tell them no. That's when the disruption is going to occur. But if we know that, and I'm going to say an extreme case, I'm going to make this extreme, if they say that they're going to be carrying firearms while they're in the parade, well, we don't, they don't allow that in the parade. So no, we're not going to allow them to do things that aren't allowed by everybody else. And the chamber has the power and the ability to prevent anybody from being on there. Once they tell them, "You can't be in the parade," and they refuse, then it's law enforcement's in charge at that point, and they would contact us, and we'd ask them to leave, and/or they'd be arrested for trespassing. But we don't expect that, or obviously want that to occur, but we have to think about what's going to happen if it goes the bad way.
What's the name of this group? I mean, is it a larger part of, across America?
So, and it's the Women's March is where it's on a dot com at this point, but I just received more information that there's, they're calling it, it's connected with the Kings group.
No Kings.
The what?
No. No Kings.
No Kings, right?
That's anti-Trump.
Yes, yes. So there's a number of organizations that are kind of all participating in this, these events, so who knows who you're going to get exactly, but that's the information we have so far, is that that's, this women's group is the ones that has this date and time for Emmett. All right. You guys have any questions about the report or anything else?
Thank you, and I'm sorry.
Oh, don't be sorry. You know, that's what we.
You shouldn't have to deal with this.
It's what we sign up for, and we, I just got off the phone with my lieutenant, and he said something pretty important to me, is he said, you know, "We have the backing of our community, and that we know that they will support us in the things that we need to get done." So it's good to hear that. I know that, and now I know the guy behind me knows that, and so that's important. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. Public Works is somewhere in a mountain top. Systems. Please state your name and tell me which of your side.
Mike Emmett. Any questions?
Mike Emmett?
Mike Emmett.
Thanks, yeah.
We're calling him Mike Emmett.
Not Mike Hammer. All right. Thanks, have a good night.
Thank you.
All right. We have, well, we have an engineer, but he or she is not here. Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mayor, make the motion to adjourn.
All right.
Second.
All right.